Raising public money is more or less, you know, a statement to the council that says, "Put your money where your mouth is." If in fact, the public says, "No, no, no, we're willing to put tax dollars in there," then I think that then the door is open, you know, is wide open and we can actually go robustly and move robustly along. And I think that that's very appropriate as well. But I can't see how anybody would think that it's an inappropriate thing to ask the taxpayer, you know, "We're not sure, you know, we're pretty sure we're gonna just go with public funds or with private funds, you know, just to get certification that that's exactly the only way this thing is gonna move forward." So I believe something that is discussing, not the size, not the offices, you know, not even where it should be, because of course with the high-speed rail coming through and electrification, maybe it's not the right place to put it at this location. And, you know, we heard another resident, Lou spoke about, "Hey, it's time for us to think about moving away from the train tracks." But that's not what we're gonna ask the public. That can come later. That's an EIR type of discussion. The real thing is, you know, should we be hamstrung like we are today, you know, asking for $5,000 here, $2,000 there? Or should we have some tax funds available? And I think it's a very appropriate question to ask, and I would think that everybody would be eager to ask that question. So I'd like to see a ballot measure that gets to the heart of the discussion, and that is the heart of the discussion. Put your money where your mouth is.
Could you go further and express what you would recommend? Because I've kind of brought me to the cliff and I haven't jumped off yet, so.
I think it should be, we want to carve out, and I know we have a very astute city attorney who will craft some language, but I think that I'd like to see a question, should a Newtown center be built solely with private funds? But then we need to carve out the fact that we have building department funds which are actually, you know, some taxpayers actually have put money in for that because it's in their permit fees, so that has to be carved out. And I think it's incumbent on us to say, ask the question, "Well, what if? What if things don't work out this way?" And we want to go through and build maybe a smaller town center, but we're going to do something with regards to allocating out, like we're doing on Marsh Road, certain hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in our capital plan and say we're gonna build in three years and we need to put in half a million to a million dollars each year as part of our capital plan. So if in fact that's part of our normal capital budget, then that should be allocated out. But I think that what we don't wanna have is, as I've referred to before, creeping investment, like the Quad Games. Oh, we're gonna, Cow Trains is gonna pay for it, oh, we're just gonna put $100,000 in, you know, and eventually, you know, we may end up paying more and more, so, you know, I don't know. So I think that there should be some sort of qualifier that the public gets a chance to weigh in on, because it is something that public has discussed many times.
Could I ask you something?
True.
Do you think maybe the word principally with private donations should be put in so that there's some opportunity for the council to put in some funds, you know, like for advertising or for public outreach, things like that, and they don't have any donations yet?
Well principally would be, you know, principally would be something in, you know, 80% or more. When somebody says principally to me, it'd be three-quarters, 80%.
That's, that's gonna...
Principally is 51%.
Oh, then that's not good.
Well...
Predominantly is gonna be more than that, but it's not a specific number.
Maybe I'm missing a group.
There was no words, there's no language in for a ballot measure.
The city manager raises a very interesting question, because if you say, if you present to the voters, "Should we build a Newtown center using principally, predominantly, or mostly, or 83% or more private funds?" And they say, "No." Now what does that mean? That means you're stuck with general funds, general taxpayer funds. So, I mean, just so you understand, that is essentially what you're saying. Maybe what you wanna ask, you know, do you wanna use private funds predominantly, or do you wanna use taxpayers' funds predominantly? And because the other segment of that would be the building funds.
Well, we wanna have the building fund. You know, I think that the building fund, and it's not a number that's there solid today, it's because it's growing. We don't want to exclude that. It's been assumed and discussed at this council that there is a fund, this kind of starter set, that would be used and it would have to, of course, you know, be targeted for building, the building department portion of the building. So that $2 million, $2 million plus, whatever that number ends up being at the time that we're moving forward, I think is, we don't want to exclude that. Similarly, you know, I would not want to exclude the fact that if everybody says, "No," that we don't say, "Well, we gotta build a $2 million house," when we think that the minimum we can live with is four. So then in which case we'd say, "Okay, we would have to start by such and such a time, and we would have to allocate, and we would have to do the belt tightening and the proper allocation of the funds like we did this year in our capital plan." Which is what, you know, if you're maintaining a family budget and you wanna build, buy a house or build a new house and you don't have all the money in your bank account, you say, "Okay, we're gonna not do this, we're not gonna do that, but we're gonna put it in the kitty and grow it."
Well, this is all, this is all helpful, because this all originally started off with a very simple statement, using only donated funds. And then we got it back into where we have the building funds in, but what if we were $100,000 short? If this passed using predominantly, primarily, or whatever, someone could argue that that last $100,000 has to come from somewhere besides general fund money. And we just wanna make sure that we don't...
And I would, I would be like...
Without language hamstring the council...
I don't think $100,000 would be a delay. We would wait for timing on the money coming in and we'd allocate the capital plan.
So what is it that we're trying to decide on?
What the ballot measure would be in this area on this item, or...
We're trying to decide on the language for the ballot measure?
Yeah. Well, staff didn't come back with any.
I mean...
What do we want the residents to vote on regarding the Newtown Center, if anything at all?
Well, I don't mind them voting, but we need to know what they're gonna vote on.
And that's what we're discussing.
Why would you...
Yep. That's what we're discussing.
So did you come up with some language?
Well, may I have a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the Newtown Center is a project that has been stopping and starting for many, many years. I mean, there's been many other councils who tried to get an upgraded town administration and police department, and it got shut down and shut down because there was never any real funds through the general fund or the, you know, ability to get a loan because of our revenue sources are so iffy. And then actually, I think we were, when we were looking at financing sources, we came to our awareness that Atherton has never had a credit rating, so it's never, so it doesn't have a credit rating, so it couldn't go and, you know, try to get some financing. Anyway, so two, three years ago, the Blue Ribbon Task Force, of which Councilmember Dobbie was part of, and many other residents and members of the library fund and library community were part of that, the Blue Ribbon Task Force, they did a lot of work, and William Gridley was part of that also. They presented to the town their Blue Ribbon Report at the end of 2009, and at that point then council reappointed a task force, a Newtown Center task force, to take that Blue Ribbon Report and research financing alternatives and architectural procedures. And Councilmember Carlson and I were on that committee. So throughout 2010, we did this, we came up with a design competition at no cost to the town, realizing that the only way a Newtown Center was going to be built was through the pocketbooks of our private donors in town, much like Portola Valley did when they raised over $17 million to build their Newtown Center with one of their lead residents bill laying from Sunset Magazine at the time, writing the seed check of a million dollars. So that was the premise, and we've always gone through the process with that in mind, that it was gonna be voted on by the town residents through their pocketbooks to build a Newtown Center. Many times we came back to council. Mayor Widmer is now on the committee, and we were verified and validated unanimously that by the full council to continue the work, to go through a pro bono process with the architect, to scale down, to interview the staff members in light of the outsourcing, to get a new and more accurate headcount and size the structure. So why this is gonna be taken out to the voters, I don't know. I honestly don't know, except we, a petition was circulating to put the library in the park on the ballot, and so this has come up. So to ask the residents whether they want a Newtown Center or not is, I think, not the issue at this point, because the design is not there, the process is in its infancy, it hasn't really cost the town any money at all. Actually, I refuse to take any money from the town, except Mayor Widmer at the beginning of the year said, "You know, let's just get $5,000 to do a marketing study." And council said, "Okay, we'll give you $5,000." So that's the extent of the money that the town has given the task force, the Town Center Task Force, to market or to get this moving along. It is such in its infancy that, you know, if you wanna go out and ask the residents, "Do you think that the town of Atherton needs to upgrade its existing facilities in a Newtown and police, to bring its police department into the modern age so that it's not going to fall down around us and that we're not going to be at risk of having OSHA come in and slap a lawsuit against us for out-of-compliance code violations?" That's one thing. I honestly don't know why we're even thinking about asking the residents to vote, because the only way, the only way a Newtown Center is going to be built is through the generous contributions from our residents, and that in effect is voting to build the Center.
So then why would you have a problem with the question that says, "Should a Newtown Center be built exclusively through your pocketbooks?"
I just think it's inappropriate at this time.
Okay, but you've said several times during the presentation that, you know, the only way it's gonna get built is if the town makes the donations. The town has all been unanimous about, "We're only gonna do it with donations." Personally, I think if the town says, "No, we're willing to pay some tax dollars in it," I think that that would be a great thing, because honestly...
That's, that's another issue. You could go out and ask, "Do you want to float a bond to build a Newtown Center?"
Well, I think, I'd rather be more in the positive, that, you know, because your position has been all along, and a position has been, there's gonna be, is gonna be no, no cost to the town.
Well, same here.
But I'm trying to carve out, I'm trying to carve out things in case things go wrong, but, you know, I really don't, to me, there's no downside on this. Number one, number one, the people vote and say, "No, no, you can have tax dollars, and then we can build it tomorrow." Or number two, they say, "Yeah, you stay with your plan because it's just the voter or contributions to the town." So I don't really see what the downside is and what the issue is.
I'm just really confused as to about it.
This end of the table, we've lost track with...
You're saying tax dollars now?
Because, because how, so basically, how is that different from asking this question? "Do you want a Newtown Center using either private or tax money?" Because that's what...
No, no, we're not saying that.
But what you just said were two totally diametrically opposed ballot measures. One saying primarily with private donations, the other one says, "And if you don't like that..."
No, I didn't say that.
But how am I supposed to phrase that? I'm trying to...
Well, I was rebutting the vice mayor. I wasn't trying to give you... I wasn't trying to give you language. If you'd like me to craft a language, I'd be more than happy to and submit it to you.
Well, we need to have, no, I need to have three votes. If the council's gonna do it.
I really think we have to, it has to be limited to private donations, because that one, that's what's always been represented. Two, it was stated at the last meeting of the Town Center Committee, and it is a right issue, that they were going to go out for large private donations come this fall, which would be even before the vote, and then start a campaign for the smaller donations beginning in January. That's certainly right. And if those donations start coming in and we don't know whether or not this is something that the people want to go forward, what do we do when the donations come in and the people aren't agreeable to it? Do we start returning the donations?
No, you put them in escrow. It's the same way as Portola Valley did. You put it all in an escrow fund on the basis that if you don't do it, they get the money back.
So this is the right way to do it. Certainly, this is the right timing. Now is the time to figure out if this is what the people want. So you wanna, you wanna take a stab at the language?
Well, I think we should probably hear from the public if council members don't wanna make any other comments.
I'll stick my neck out. I think talking about tax dollars is not a good thing right now, using tax dollars. I understand what you're, you'd like to leave your options open, but I, where things stand right now, as I understand it with the council's position on this, is that the committee was given the charter to test the waters, to see if there were private donations sufficient out there to build a Newtown Center. And to do that, they needed to have something to talk to the donors about, and hence the, sort of the general concept or something like that, I guess it was growing up. The problem I guess I have with going ahead right now is that I think there are a lot of questions that are gonna be asked that we don't have answers for. You know, how much is, how much is this gonna cost? We have no idea what's size, how much we're looking for, we have no idea what the dollar amount might be. What about town staff? We've made some changes in town staff the past couple of years. What are the, are we ready to answer the questions about what the Newtown Center is gonna be housing? I have to see a lot of, a lot of discussion and a lot of questions being raised about that, the question about where the site might be, and so there are a whole host of questions here that I'm just kinda leery about putting something out there at this point in time.
Well, but is that really relevant? The real, the real question would be...
It'll be the voters.
Well, but one could say the same thing about the library, you know, how big is it gonna be, what's gonna be inside, what's the exterior gonna look like? We don't know. That's gonna be decided by the voters. In this case, the real relevant question for them is, so long as it's not going to be paid for by the taxpayers, are they willing to move forward with it? And then make those other decisions.
Okay, we've come up with some language here.
So you can go to bed? Poor thing.
I mean, can we, can we say that, in the language, can we say that we're asking the voters to approve a Newtown Center built by voluntary donations from residents or others?
Well, I already said that. Should the town of Atherton...
The town of Atherton construct a Newtown Center...
Is that all we need?
...with non-general fund or parcel tax money. And then it was pointed out that needed to be revised somewhat to say principally or mainly, chiefly, predominantly, all of which are synonyms by the way, with private funds. And we have to then somehow reference that there are building department funds that are out there for contribution as well.
But that still doesn't tell me what the language is for this.
The worst way to design a building is to do it with a committee of people in a public meeting.
Not a ballot measure.
My, I'm gonna say, I'm sitting here trying to listen to all of you, and I wrote down a lot of things you said, but if I come up with language tonight, it may be something that tomorrow I regret, let alone you regret.
Well, when can you come up with some language?
Well, I can certainly easily bring it back to whenever the, if you tabled the matter, the last matter, if you tabled this one or continued this one, whenever you have a meeting, we can certainly do it.
Well, I'd say, I'd go along with that, 'cause I...
I'd like to, I'd like to do a little research outside of this, the dais here. I'd like to find out how much building department money we have so that, and then maybe asking Elizabeth or others on the committee, what is the estimate total amount? Because if it's, if the building department's contribution is 30%, so, you know, is that an issue?
How long do you need to do this, Bill, and when can you get it done?
Well, I'm at the mercy of others. I won't be physically here tomorrow, but I can certainly call other people, and it certainly is something that theoretically can be done within a few days.
Okay, in that case, then why don't we just table this until you come up with it? And get back together, and if we like it, approve it.
The public would probably want to...
I mean, that would be my, but no, if we table it, you just told me we don't need public comments.
No, we do need public comments after it comes back, but, you know, that's fine. Well, the process and it's, you saw it work tonight, actually, where we come up with language and the public has some time to look at and consider and show up and make comments.
So what you're saying is if we table this tonight, we don't need public comments?
Technically, that's true.
Okay, in that case, that would be my...
Could we set a time on this? This has to be on the table and have a...
Well, we want the ballot for the voters.
Eight o'clock next Tuesday? Eight o'clock next Tuesday?
Probably had on the last one. Two council members will say they can't...
But they can look at it and...
No public comment?
But we only, I don't think this is, I don't think this one is gonna be that controversial. I don't think. And therefore, even if we don't have a full council, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem. I mean, I might be wrong, but...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Dobbie, but we put this meeting at this date and time so that you could return from your vacation. I would expect the same consideration.
Well, I'm happy to do a petition, but what Bill is saying is, nobody's gonna be around in time to get this on the ballot. Well, what I'm saying is, I'm happy to have a meeting anytime to take care of your, you know, participate, everybody's petition base, but it sounds like if we're gonna put this on the ballot, we gotta do it by August the 10th, and that seems to limit what we have to do.
Can't you call in Elizabeth?
Maybe don't put it on the ballot.
I can't.
Can I raise a little point of administrative concern? Because there was a petition submitted with hundreds of signatures seeking a meeting, and it has been postponed till after the deadline for putting things on the ballot because you couldn't be scheduled. And that one comes before the two meetings that you are now talking about, trying to fit in in the next week, and our meeting has been postponed to the 13th, which is too late for anything to happen for the ballot. So that's just, doesn't seem fair. So if you're gonna reschedule meetings, I'd like our meeting to be moved up first.
Would you have it be available by telephone?
No, she said she's...
Jerry?
I don't know, probably have it on the next hour. I'll put it to the air and you'll work out.
Draft?
I can draft away. The public comments will be on a blank, and they can certainly comment on whether or not we should do anything, but since we have no language, it's a little...
Little stranger, little draft.
Do you wanna draft and take a recess and come back in 30 minutes?
Well, you can do that, but the reason I would...
But you may be mugged in the park here.
That is the least of my fears.
Good.
But I do need to talk to the city manager, and we might need to talk to Public Works Director and others, because what we put in here might impact other funds and things, and I don't know if we need to talk to Tepper or not. Last time around, this wasn't just sat down for 10 minutes, it was sat down and went back and reviewed a lot of documents. I can do something, the question is, will it be something meaningful and of course the public won't have seen it? That's your, your call.
I think we have a choice.
I'd like to suggest that we table it, just like we tabled the little link ballot measure to a date that Teresa will poll us on the meeting wizard, and then we can come back and convene.
That's the same as filling out...
Well, we will table it then. I can, I'm, well, they may table it, but we'll table it to a point where we'll have a quorum. If we, if we can't put one together, where we have all five of us, then I will, we'll give the city manager permission to call the meeting for the date where there's a quorum. If that's okay with everybody, then we can table it.
I would like to modify that, that it would have the full council, because this is important. There are not many opportunities for the council to rule on having ballot measures put on.
Well, but I understand that, and you say you can't make a commitment on a date, and Jerry seems to have a similarly clogged calendar, so then we can just stay.
However, I was here for the last six weeks, and for any meeting, if you look at the meeting, I've been available, so...
I have been too.
Yeah.
So we're gonna table it? Is that the decision? Can I make a motion to table it?
Yes.
Also, Dan?
Table it to a time when there is, if not a full council, at least a quorum.
There's a motion on the floor in the second...
I'd like to amend it.
Can you amend it?
Well, you were making a motion.
Not in the second.
He can amend it, 'cause otherwise he just withdraws the motion, and there's no motion on the floor, and somebody has to make a new...
There's no discussion of motions to table, is there?
Yeah, I would, because we were discussing whether or not we would have a quorum or we would have the full...
Were you making a motion?
Well, I was trying to have a discussion, actually. I wasn't making a motion. I was trying to make a discussion, because, but because the tabling, the tabling would require potentially a, not a full council, because the easiest way to is just say, "I'm not available."
That's correct. It's ridiculous.
I do have parliamentary rules, but it will take me a minute to discover.
Look it up. I've got it right here.
A motion to table, it takes precedence and then other discussions, that's all.
Yeah, it is though.
A motion to table...
It was ordered right here.
A motion to table, this motion if passed, if passed, requires discussion of the agenda item to be halted and the agenda item to be placed on hold. That means, but it doesn't say that you can't discuss it. The motion may contain a specific time in which the item can come back, or the motion may contain no specific time, in which case the motion, take the item off the table, bring it back to the body, will have to be taken at a future meeting. A motion to table the item requires a simple majority vote. It's different than a motion to limit debate, it says nothing in here about, I think that common sense and politeness would say that, absent something in here saying to the contrary, that if, if there's a question about what is meant by the motion to table, or how's it gonna impact everybody, you ought to be able to ask that question.
Councilmember Dobbie would like to read it.
I'd like to read, this is Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
That's why I just quoted from...
It said, "This motion if passed, this motion if passed, requires discussion of the agenda item to be halted and the agenda item placed on hold."
Correct.
"The motion can contain a specific time in which the item can come back to the body. I move we table this item under a regular meeting in October, or the motion contain no..." no specific items, specific items for the return of the item, in which case, a motion to take the item off the table and bring it back to the body will have to be taken at a future meeting. A motion to table an item, or to bring it back to the body, requires a simple majority vote."
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I quoted to you. Um, the point I'm making is, Councilmember Carlson is saying there's no discussion on a motion to table. I don't get that from, from what he just read, so I think that you can't have discussion of it.
And my discussion is, is that there may be a scheduling conflict with, with one or two of the council members, and so I would caution the council members, when we're, when we're, if we're going to table it, uh, that, uh, that we may have a, a problem having a full council to, to approve it. Now, now, Elizabeth, Elizabeth said that she wants to have it to where all of us could be available, so I guess really there's two things that council members need to approve.
But, well, first of all, we have to, if we've, we've got a motion to table it, we should vote on the motion to table it, or if we're discussing the vote to table it, that's what we're discussing. So, my feeling is, at the moment, we have a, a motion to table it. I think it's, I'd like to have that vote.
There are two, have to be two parts to it, to make any sense for us. One, do we need, if there's a motion to table it, and also do, when we set a new date, do we have to have just a quorum, or do we have to have...
You don't need that. You don't need that vote in the table.
That, we don't have to have that add-on, so...
You don't have to have that.
I think, I think we have to call for the vote, for the motion that's on, on the table.
I think it'd be inappropriate to have the vote without all of the council members, because it would just set up another conference, but I will...
Well, I'm really, I'm...
Well, it's a separate issue.
Mayor calls for a special meeting.
That's a separate issue.
So, it just, so everybody understands, the motion to table, we'll take it off your agenda right now. No more discussion, no input, nothing, done. And it won't come back before you until either the city manager adds it to a regular meeting, or the mayor, or two people call for a special meeting, at which time it will be held.
Three people.
And as long as there's a quorum at the special meeting, that's when it will be held.
Yeah. All right, then we can vote for that. There's a motion to table the, the session.
Okay, let's, let's vote on it, all right?
So that they would not talk about it tonight, so we find out more information.
Okay, so a motion on the table, uh, on the table is to table this until a special meeting is called. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then staff will come back as quickly as possible with some proposed language that we take, enforce of what you wanted to...
And just as a comment, I would really appreciate the respect and the consideration that we gave Councilmember Dobbie while he was on his vacation, uh, and couldn't attend the meeting earlier, like, uh, last week, and we had to schedule that day, and we could accommodate some of those schedules.
So, so, should we make us a schedule? We appreciate it. Anywhere.
We're gonna be gone tomorrow, next week.
Right, but after next week.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, oh, to adjourn, okay, okay.
Thank you for coming and staying.